Okay.
I go around and touch it.
Okay.
All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to call this Planning Development and Building Committee meeting to order at 5:34. Very few minutes behind, so thank you for your grace and flexibility. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Frittel if you would give us the invocation. Please stand.
Please stand. Heavenly Father, we come before you with gratitude and recognize your sovereignty over our nation, our state, our county, and you are the foundation upon which we build our communities and light which guides us through the times of uncertainty and a source of true wisdom and justice. I ask you that you continue to guide us and present us, and in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thanks, sir. All right. The first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing, a recommendation for second reading regarding rezoning request number 931 by Wanda Lenore to rezone 1.7 acres located off 1636 Central Avenue near Somerville, TMS number 135-16-00-002 from Office and Institutional District, OI, to General Commercial District, CGI. I will open the public hearing.
Yes, sir. This first item for your consideration is a parcel of land located near Knightsville Crossroads. This is on Central Avenue. It's just over one and a half acres. It's currently developed as a single-family residential piece of property. It's zoned Office and Institutional, which allows the continuation of single-family or transition to office-type uses. The applicant is actually seeking to go to General Commercial, which is in line with other rezonings that we've had in the area recently. They're looking to be able to sell the parcel for commercial use, which is why they're asking for the General Commercial zoning. The future land use in the crossroads node allows for General Commercial. It's within the General Commercial District regulations of within a quarter mile of the intersection. It meets that requirement, meets the size requirement. So, we looked at it. Staff didn't see any issues. We took it to Planning Commission. Planning Commission recommended approval at their April meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Send any questions or any other folks wishing to speak on this particular rezoning request? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, a recommendation for second reading regarding official map amendment number 25-01 for Dorchester County to rezone the following parcels, TMS numbers 098-00-00-009, Z-010-032, 026-00-00-057, 108-00-00-066, and 097-00-Z-00-016 from Agricultural Residential District, AR, to Industrial District, I, and TMS numbers 098-00-00-011, -230-007-00-00-127, and -230 through 233 from Agricultural Residential, AR, to Commercial Light Industrial, CLI. I will open the public hearing.
Yes, sir. This is a group of parcels. This is actually a county-initiated rezoning. We've been working for years, as you are aware, to update the, what was the Absence of Controls District in the upper part of the county. It's now the Agricultural Residential District. And as we've made those changes over the number of years, uses that were outright permitted became special exceptions. Those special exceptions then went away. And so, we have a number of industries within the upper part of the county that are considered legal non-conforming. And that's fine. They can continue to operate with that legal non-conforming status, but if they want to expand, if they want to do work on the site, they will then have to be prompted to rezone. So, we're preemptively working to address that with a number of sites. We had a large list that we worked with economic development. We went through. And what you're seeing in front of you tonight is several different areas where we looked at the parcels, the existing businesses. We looked at the future land use map. We looked at the zoning districts and their ability to comply with the regulations within those zoning districts. And that's what we're bringing forward to you at this time. So, we've got a couple different clumps. We've got Sifa Trucking, which is up off of Charleston Highway, up past 95. That is going to, I believe, Commercial Light Industrial. We have Resnak Shovedenko, which is in Ridgeville area. That's being rezoned, as well as Key West Boats and other parcels in the Ridgeville area that are close in proximity to Key West Boats. And then, another parcel off on the other side of 26, where, over by Giant Cement. So, the ones that we're bringing to you today are all either going to Industrial or Commercial Light Industrial, which will allow these businesses to continue operations in a legal conforming status, and they'll be able to expand their operations on the site in the future without having to go through the rezoning process. So, we took this to Planning Commission at their April meeting, and they recommended approval. So, we're bringing it before you now.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this? Please come forward. Name and address.
Tommy Fagan, 111 Ponderosa Road. Yes, sir. These parcels, if any of them are, they all being taxed at 6% commercial? And if any are not, being that it's being rezoned, will they be taxed at 6% commercial now? Should they be receiving any agricultural deferment of taxes?
Go ahead, Mr. Ward.
Yeah. All of these properties are currently being used as industrial or commercial light industrial, so they're not receiving ag.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on this particular rezoning request? All right, hearing none. I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Motion carries. Is there another motion?
Let's do adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned. 5:41. Thank you.
Eddie's Gavel.
I'm over here just sleeping on it. Sorry about that.
See, I made the playoffs.
Hurricane. We're in.
Just hopefully we don't get bounced from our own regionals.
I got nothing.
I'm gonna call this June 2th Dorchester County Council meeting to order and I will ask if everyone will please rise. Council Mo and Rita May Rank is gonna lead us into invocation, after which we will stay standing for the pledge.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day. We thank you for the traveling mercies that you gave to each of us as we came to this meeting. We pray that you'll be with us as we go about the business of the county, keep our minds clear, and help us to do what's best for the citizens that we represent. And we just ask that you keep our first responders safe and thank you for everything you do for us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda tonight is adoption of minutes for the May 19th County Council meeting. There is a motion and a second any discussion. All in favor?
We are unanimous. Next, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I saw that hand. So it is six in favor and one abstention. You were listening, no? Next item on the agenda is presentation of the 2025 First Quarter Employee of the Quarter to Ms. Brenda Middleton. Brenda's Dorchester County Facilities Maintenance and then the next one, I'm gonna get you to go ahead and come up front. We can get you both to come up front at the same time when I mention this next one. The next one is First Responder of the Quarter Award to Mr. Norman Hand, Dorchester County Sheriff's Office. We're gonna get you. If you'll stand right there, I'm gonna let Mr. Ward tell everybody why you guys are so great.
The Employee of the Quarter, Brenda Middleton from the Facilities Department. Ms. Middleton ensures the staff and visitors of the KFW have a clean and safe work environment while sharing her infectious smile and gift of gab. Known for being a team player with outstanding dedication and loyalty, Ms. Brenda is always eager to put a smile on your face. She enjoys showering her coworkers with love by decorating the KFW break room with seasonal decor and providing snacks, fruit, candy, and her home cooking. For special occasions or birthday parties. Her love for people shines through each day. Just don't try to tell her how to spend her money. We thank Ms. Brenda from the KFW team, our Employee of the Quarter, Brenda Middleton. Our First Responder of the Quarter, Officer Norman Hand with the Sheriff's Office. In today's world, dropping children off at a school can fill parents with all types of emotions and anxiety. School resource officers face a unique challenge working day to day in schools while maintaining their standards as law enforcement officers. Deputy Hand Woodland Middle School's Resource, School Resource Officer balances his role of authority with compassion and engaging communication. His love for his job and students is evident, daily by the smile on his face and the way he conducts himself. Deputy Hand's presence brings a reassurance to parents on school safety while reminding us that connecting with people at all stages in life is important. Thank you Deputy Hand for your caring and compassionate service to the students at Woodland Middle School and our community. First Responder Norman Hand.
If I can get council to meet me down there, we're gonna shake some hands and thank them again.
Thank you, man. I need an email when you cook the next time.
Mr. Ward, Mr. Ward sent me a picture of Ms. Middleton at Memorial Day and I just wasn't fast enough to get it sent to get it on the screen there. But everybody that was there saw that. Again, oh, don't get in the middle. I'm not in the middle. I can miss the pictures altogether. Again, thank y'all very much. All right, since we are in this realm of recognizing folks for everything they've done for the county and the citizens of Dorchester County, the next item on the agenda is recognition of Dorchester County.
Mr. Chairman, before we go to that, could we just make some comments about these folks?
Sure, absolutely.
I mean, one of the things I wanted to just mention with Officer Hand, thank you for doing what you're doing. Some of us were here when we voted to put SROs in all the schools. There was a time where we didn't have SROs in all the schools in Dorchester County and after the Parkwood shooting, we elected to do that and made sure that we had them in all the schools. And so that job is extremely important, not only for safety, but you're teaching kids early on to respect the badge, that it's something that for public safety, it's a great thing. So thank you for what you're doing. I mean, it's a calling for those kids. It's a lot of fun, a lot of emotions, kids breaking up and doing all kinds of things that cause drama and you gotta deal with that. But just wanted to just give a shout out that for that. Thank you for what you're doing there.
Thank you. And we may touch on some of the things that they have the opportunity to do in this two down the list here.
All right.
Next item on the agenda is recognition of Dorchester County Employee, Ms. Erica Bries for successful completion of the Public Leadership Apprenticeship. Ms. Bries? And I'm gonna have Ms. Thompson come up. Mr. Ward.
So Ms. Bries, a senior paramedic crew chief with Dorchester County EMS, has successfully completed 8,000 hours of on-the-job training supplemented by the required 900 hours of job-related education. Ms. Bries has earned an associate degree from Treda Technical College and earned her certificate of completion of apprenticeship from the United States Department of Labor. Congratulations.
So the next is a little bit different. We get requests all the time to do proclamations and I've probably heard me say it before, we do these proclamations, we hand them out to folks and they stick them in a drawer somewhere and they remember about this time next year that they need to ask for a proclamation again. And that is no offense to anybody that sticks their proclamation in a drawer. When it came up, this opportunity came up this year, I sat down with our PIO and Stephen Smith, our Communications Coordinator, so Aaron and Stephen sat down and they said, we're gonna do something, we're gonna do a little video. So in a recognition of Elevate Fatherhood Month, we're gonna try to queue up this video here that will be available during social media and everything else. And I want to thank, Stephen's not here tonight, but I want to thank Stephen Smith for showing up and doing this and for my wife and three of my kids and son-in-law and daughter-in-law for being a part of this thing while we did this. So thank y'all. Here we go.
In every child's life, a father's presence is a guiding light, offering comfort, strength, and endless love. Yet too many fathers face challenges that keep them from embracing this vital role. Since 2002, the South Carolina Center for Fathers and Families has been bridging that gap, ensuring every dad has the support to thrive. Through parenting education, job readiness training, legal assistance, and emotional support, the center empowers over 3,000 fathers every year in all 46 counties of South Carolina.
We provide the resources for fathers to become great dads. A father's job is 365 days a year. It's just, it's like a mother's.
Program was a savior. You know, of course, we had meetings every Tuesday, so every week I got to get everything off my chest. And then I got to hear other men who were going through the same thing, so I knew I wasn't out here by myself.
Most men think if I pay child support, then that's enough. But becoming a father is much more than that. It's being the emotional, it's being there physically for your child. It's how to converse with the mother. It's how you're gonna react to the child. It's helping the child grow. It's not just the materialistic side.
We're focused on dads. And a lot of the dads we work with are disconnected from their children. There is an estimated 40,000 to 50,000 fathers just in South Carolina that are disconnected from their kids. And we just simply try to help the fathers reconnect with their children, provide for their needs, provide positive engagement because the studies show that when dads have positive engagement with their children over a period of time, that child will be better and that family will be better for generations to come.
Across our county, from intimate family moments to community celebrations, the strength of fatherhood is evident. The South Carolina Center for Fathers and Families is making a difference, one life at a time.
My proudest role before I ever considered public service was being my children's dad. Every day, the love, joy, and responsibility I share with my children shape who I am. Strong families build strong communities. When fathers lead with love and commitment, our neighborhoods become safer, more compassionate, and more resilient. I stand and serve for our dads because their success fuels the strength of our entire community.
Every father deserves the chance to be present, to guide, and to love. When fathers thrive, families flourish, and our entire community blossoms. Empower a father, strengthen a family, right in our future.
There is a great joy in being a dad. And we want those dads who have perhaps not felt the joy of being a father to have that joy once again. And our programs and services are simply a means by which those dads can understand how to achieve that joy. And so as we celebrate this year, 2025, as Elevate Fatherhood Month in June, our goal is to raise the awareness of the vital role dads play in families. And all over the state, we are grateful for Dorchester County for their recognizing how important fathers are in families, obviously, but how then those stable families are in the community and all across the county.
Dr. Ford, if you'd like to come up and say a few words, I'm gonna put you on the spot.
That's fine. I'm used to that. Thank you so much. I won't take much of your time, but we were here last year and y'all have graciously supported the work that we do in all 46 counties. But in Dorchester County, it is considered what we call an outreach county. We have 17 full-service offices around the state. But in the other counties, we serve those counties with dads on a weekly or monthly or quarterly basis. And so our offices over in Moncks Corner, North Charleston, come across and they meet with dads at Family Court and other places so that they can understand how to help them navigate some of the tough issues of being a dad, especially if they've been disconnected for a while. So thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for the special video. It's great. And I'll let you know that none of our proclamations are in a drawer. They're all on a wall. So back in Columbia. So we appreciate all of your support and your special words, too. Thank you.
Thank you. And I kinda, I hinted on this. I know a lot of times from the standpoint of SROs, they end up being that surrogate dad in that school. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And as June, I guess there are no small coincidence that June being the Elevate Fatherhood Month, also on June 15th is Father's Day for all of you and us that are fathers. Remember your fathers. All right, next item on the agenda, a request to address council, and I have one. I'm gonna ask Ms. Karen Bennett if they will come to the front and we'll get you to state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Hello, everyone. I wasn't quite expect, I didn't know what to expect. And I'm pleasantly surprised to see everyone here. For many, many years, I have had a desire to see dog breeders become licensed. Somebody mentioned to me once, you need a license to cut toenails. Somebody mentioned to me once, you need a license to cut toenails, but you don't need a license to breed dogs. The last time I was at Dorchester Paws, they had a sign out that said, sorry, we're full. And that really saddened me to see that. I know that they're in the process of trying to build a new shelter. I understand it's in the millions of dollars. And part of the problem that I see is someone said to me once, no matter how big you build the shelter, you will fill it. And sadly, we keep supporting breeders. And a lot of people I know even pay thousands of dollars. And I'm not disputing that there are some very good breeders that breed to improve the quality of the breed of dog, not to make money only. And one of the things that my husband and I have noticed, we've lived here now a year and a half, is that on several of the poles and trees and signs as you're driving down the road, there are signs that, oh, sorry, there are signs that say, you know, rutweiler puppies or sheltie puppies or whatever for sale. And what I'd like to see is these people at least be registered or be licensed, something maybe similar to a contractor who does repairs on homes, contractor, what do they call it, register of contractors. Anyway, we don't know where to begin. I've done work in shelters, I've done everything you can think of that has to do with dogs. But this I see as a problem. And if we could maybe use the funding, because myself is, I did breed my dog once, 25 years ago, I'll never do it again, but I did breed my dog. And if somebody would have said, you need to buy a license and it's $500, I would have gladly paid it because I wanted a puppy of my dogs. And anyway, I don't know where to begin with, you know, we plan to live here now the rest of our lives. And so if somebody could guide us as to how we could get something like this at least considered, we would appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is correspondence. Mr. Ward.
Mr. Chairman and Council, I'm glad to share with you that the county was notified last week that it received a $1,252,245 basic infrastructure grant from the South Carolina Rural Infrastructure Authority for the rice mill and first bin road drainage projects. The total cost of both is $2,477,000. So the county's match is below that, it's $1,224,755. These are important Stormwater Enterprise Fund projects that have been identified in our CIP. And I want to congratulate Ms. Tracus, Mr. Goldston, and those that they've been working with to put this together to help us handle a 10-year, 24-hour storm event and a 50-year, 24-hour storm event, as well as a 50-year, 24-hours storm event at Hilton Road as a result of this project being undertaken. So sometimes people questioning what their funds are being used for and how they're being leveraged, this is an example of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda are guests, and I am going to invite Mr. Tom McNeil, Dorchester County Director of Emergency Management. I'm not going to steal your thunder, I'm going to let you tell us what you're talking about.
Okay. We have a lot to talk about, and I'll try to be quick. So tonight, as you said, I'm Tom McNeil, I'm the Director of Emergency Management. And thank you Chairman Chenness and council members, Mr. Ward, for having me this evening. We're going to talk about the 2025 hurricane preparedness, the hurricane season. We're going to talk a little bit about some of the Dorchester County preparation efforts that have been going on. And we're going to talk about the tri-county regional preparedness program, and then we'll get into some of the FEMA transition and what that might mean for us locally and those impacts. So first off, the forecast has come out from the National Hurricane Center for the 2025 Atlantic Hurricane Season Outlook, and they are expecting it to have a 60% chance for being an above-normal season. What does that actually mean for us, right? An above-normal season means that you will have more than the average in named storms. That's tropical storms, hurricanes, what have you. But you can have a busy season as far as storms, and they all stay out to sea. You can have a very slow season and one of them hits, and it only takes one. And we all know that, we live here in hurricane country. But that's an important thing for us to remember. Don't be freaked out by the fact that they're saying it's above-average season. We watch every storm, no matter what, and it only takes one. And in fact, there's already a disturbance, disturbance one is being tracked now by the National Hurricane Center, a little blob that's going to form potentially right off our coast. So, you know, this early in the season and water temperatures being what they were, it probably won't be much for us to worry about. But it's a good reminder, as hurricane season just began, that we're already tracking something. And in 2023, Dorchester County was named one of the top 20 most hurricane vulnerable counties, along with our partners along the coastline here. And that was largely based off of the amount of storms that we'd had and then the costs associated over like a 10-year period, right? So people will say like, why isn't the Gulf Coast? Well, they just didn't get hit as much or cost as much as we had. And we'll talk a little bit more about some numbers here in a little bit. But that's important for us to know, right? This is the low country and this is hurricane country. And if you just think back last season, how many times we were sitting in that EOC for different storms? And sometimes it's just a small group of us and my team, and sometimes it was like Debbie and the room is full. And that's important for us to consider as we talk about our preparation efforts. So what have we been doing, all right? We've been training because we have our new beautiful, I say new, it's a little bit, you know, a year or so now, but our emergency operations center, it's a fantastic facility and our ability to host classes now is tremendous. And it's a tremendous asset here that we no longer have to send staff members and community members out of jurisdiction to attend all the different incident command trainings and whatnot. And it's not just used by us, but it's also used by law enforcement and fire and EMS to have trainings and host conferences and whatnot. So it's been a fantastic asset to us and we're able to host a lot of trainings, exercises. We have our annual pre-hurricane season exercise, June 26th of this year at the EOC. You'll get more information about the time and all that kind of stuff, but I definitely, if you're available, encourage you to come by and see just how things are run. I know many of you have been around a while and you've been in the EOC when it's activated. It's something to behold. We've been working with our fire department to increase the size of our swift water rescue team that's managed by the fire department. They obviously are a very valuable asset to us during times of flooding here in Dorchester County. And now our deployable team, they've gone to help others during Hurricane Helene, they were in Anderson County, helping them, did tremendous work there. That program itself is expanding to where we're now working to form a regional team with partnership right now with Berkeley County and the town of Somerville Fire to combine to form a regional team. Because it's a lot easier to deploy if different jurisdictions are only giving a few people versus we're emptying out our entire fire department to deploy somewhere. So there's, we're working on these things and combining training and efforts. And not only is it smart, it's fiscally responsible for us to combine efforts. And it even gets into, let's all not buy the same thing. Let's, you buy this, I'll buy that. It's a great way for us to really think about the money and limited funds we have and be thoughtful. We also, public outreach and education. Some of you attended the Hurricane Expo on Saturday at the beautiful Ashley Ridge River Park. It was fantastic, well-attended. A lot of folks that attend that are the folks that are moving into this area, brand-new, never lived in hurricane country before. And we find that they are oblivious or terrified. And them coming to get that true information from folks like the National Weather Service, you know, News 5 was there, all of our different emergency services folks were there. And they were able to really dive deep into hurricane preparedness information from legitimate sources. So they're not looking online and hearing from their cousin, whoever. They heard it straight from us and it was a fantastic day and a lot of fun stuff for the kids as well. We also have been working here in the tri-county, the three emergency management directors, we started a tri-county regional preparedness program. And with that, we have our regional planner, Nick, who's here tonight. He works out of our office, but the three directors serve as the steering committee for his work, as you all know. And work has been getting done. In your packet, you'll see the regional emergency management strategic plan to help guide us in these efforts to think regionally, to spend money regionally, and then to figure out how to better help each other in these times of crisis. We, he's also, we've completed the tri-county regional mass casualty incident plan for when you have the really big and bad. It included hospitals, schools. I mean, we really dove deep into when a tragedy is occurring somewhere and we need that level of management that is a regional issue. You know, think Boston bombing, you know, those kinds of big. We've also been able to, just finishing up now, the regional threat and hazard identification and risk assessment, or THIRA, that's something that's required of us to do. And since we're doing one THIRA for the entire region, it saves us money because that's something that in the past has been contracted out in many jurisdictions where you're paying a contractor big money to come in and do this. Well, Charleston County paid a big contractor to come in and do this for all three counties. It saves us money and time. And Nick's been helping manage that contractor and that program to get this done. But it's a big deal. And because the same threats that we have in Dorchester County, they have in Berkeley, they have in Charleston, there's very little uniqueness to how threats have, you know, impact us, other than the folks right on the coastline. They have a couple extras, but it's a big deal. And then we're also working that same group to try to make this region a urban area security initiative area. That's a DHS grant program that can be big money to, you know, for preparedness and for law enforcement, homeland security-related things. So we're working diligently to try to get ourselves in a position to be able to apply for that grant program and be successful in it. So there's a lot going on. So let's transition here a little bit, that's the happy stuff. Let's transition here a little bit into what's going on with the FEMA restructuring, the preparedness grants, disaster recovery, funding and support. So what we know is that, you know, several months ago, the president stated that he wanted to eliminate FEMA. Well, that's not a done deal, right? So they've been working on it, they've been working to figure that out. There's now a council to come up with an advisement to FEMA and to the president about what to do. And so they're working on that. So FEMA at this moment isn't going away, but it is being restructured. So that's what we're, they're even talking about changing the name. So, but what it is doing, we know that they want states and local jurisdictions to take more responsibility. Once upon a time in recovery, it was kind of designed that when the local jurisdiction was out of money and broke because of the disaster, it was then a state issue. And when the state got to the point where they're like, hey, we can't afford this, then the federal government was a step in. Over time, it quickly became this, they set a threshold pretty low, and as soon as you hit that threshold, FEMA came in with a checkbook. And that became the way we've operated for years. Well, they're trying to change that and kind of go back to the original intent. But that puts us in a bind at this moment. That's part of that national resilience strategy, for us to become more resilient ourselves and to be better prepared ahead of time and not just ignore these issues we may have and just say, oh, we're okay, we don't have to do mitigation, we don't have to do other stuff because FEMA will come in and pay for it all. Well, if that's not going to happen, we have to be thinking differently about some of those pieces. So our preparedness grants, it's a decent amount of funding for my office. You know, federal grants can, you know, 29% of my budget is these grant programs. So in the graph, you see, you know, the 71% is the general fund, and then the emergency management performance grant, or EMPG, is 5%. The hazard mitigation grant program is 18%. And then even the hospital preparedness program, it gives me another 6% of my annual budget. Now, we know that the EMPG awards, they're based off of your population and the census. And it, on paper, it might look like our numbers have gone up, but in actuality, the percentage has gone down over the last five years. So that was happening before these changes began to occur. And here's a little breakdown quickly of the types of things, types of money we're talking about and the types of things that we've used them for. We've been moving, you know, over time, we moved that our planner position was moved out of the grant, but Nick's position is split between all three jurisdictions. We use this EMPG grant money to pay for his position and an equal share there. So, you know, other than that, we use it for stuff, for training, for attending conferences, for things like, we bought the crisis track program, we bought drones and our plum cases so we could communicate. There's been a lot of things that, over time, we've been able to get with this funding. So if this goes away or changes, that's a significant amount of money, as you can see just in the numbers quickly. And that's a lot of money per year, just from one grant, that is helping to cover a lot of our operational expenses and moves us forward. We do know, just released on Friday, they put out the, the OMB put out their supplement and technical supplement to the budget that kind of broke it down a little further. So we know this year in 2026, what has been sent to Congress, Congress hasn't voted on it yet, that the FEMA State Homeland Security Program has a 36% cut and now needs a 25% match. Before it was 100%, now it's a 25% match. The EMPG grant, which is the numbers you see on the screen here, is getting a 15% cut, and it already has a 25% match and always has. And then, as we had talked earlier about the Urban Area Security Initiative, or UASI, which is DHS program, they're getting a 25% cut and for the first time ever, also needs a 25% match. So there's big changes coming in that world, you know, where before it was, you know, 100%, here's your grant, and now if we do become part of that program, oh, great, now we got to figure out the 25% of it. So changes are happening. So disaster recovery, we, this is what I was talking about earlier with, you know, why are we rated higher than other communities around the nation for this? So that we don't know what the new disaster declaration threshold will be, right? Right now, it's 9 million and some change for the entire state of South Carolina, but they're looking at it, you know, increasing to 40, 50 million, maybe more. It could be a significant amount more to make that basic threshold, which then means every county has to also, their half pieces will already increase as well. But we don't know what that number's at yet. We do know that recently, some of the jurisdictions that have had some disasters who made their thresholds, local jurisdiction and state thresholds, have been denied by the White House for a federal presidential declaration, so they don't get the FEMA recovery monies. Now, they can, there's different things, SBA, like we've done, we've had smaller ones where you can get an SBA thing, but that's an interesting nuance to what's going on right now. Where's that threshold going to be set? And they're, you know, basically, you know, the thought is that they're saying, states, you don't need our money yet, you can cover some of this. And so we don't know. But as you can see in this graph here, we've received $4.5 million in disaster reimbursement since 2016. That's a lot of money in disaster reimbursement, and that's the 75-25 split, you know. We've been lucky that the state of South Carolina has often stepped in and covered that 25%. And in fact, they were, they've recently worked on some legislation to cover some of the disaster costs in between the federal reimbursement and our local burden, such as like the microburst that occurred in Somerville, where we spent, you know, a few million dollars in debris management for that, that we had to eat the burden of. So, well, now, of course, our state legislators have to figure out like, oh, gosh, well, we were thinking in the nine mil range, now it could be considerably more, what are we going to do? There's a lot of still unknowns there. So some recommendations, and this is just food for thought stuff for you guys to pine over a little bit. Some of this is already being done, just so you know. We need to anticipate minimal federal aid for disasters, right? So we're looking at different ways that we can figure out how to be more, even more fiscally responsible than we already are. And we do a pretty good job here with our disasters, you know, that we are... And we do a pretty good job here with our disasters, you know, that we are, you know, thinking about costs. Now, life safety has no cost, right? We're going to save lives. We're going to make the bad stuff stop so that we can get to a point of, okay, now what do we got to do to fix it? It's in the fix-it world, like, how do we figure out maybe better ways to share resources locally and, and be smarter about it so that we don't necessarily incur some of these larger costs? If, if we have that burden, it's, it's going to be our duty to make sure we're doing as wisely as we can. And we know disasters cost a lot of money, so it's not a perfect, you know, formula, but we're going to try. Another idea is to create disaster-specific finance reserves and, and plan for the possibility of reduced federal reimbursement, establish a county disaster relief fund for public and individual assistance, assess enterprise fund balance requirements to determine the appropriate percentage increase specifically for disaster recovery. That's, that's, you know, that's a decent one for us to think about a little bit. We know that our, our different enterprise fund balances requirements are in place, but is that enough moving forward, or do we need a definitive disaster? That's, that's definitely something to talk about. Three, strengthen state and regional partnerships, which is something we're already doing in this regional concept that we've been working on, and good ideas spread like wildfire, you know? So we're hoping that others continue to think this way. We know the COG already thinks this way with transportation projects and stuff. So we're hoping that we can continue to figure out, how do we help each other? Because usually in disasters, it's, you know, we all might experience something, but some of us experience a lot. And how do we help those jurisdictions who are getting hit the hardest with it? And four, prioritize hazard mitigation. Every, you know, dollar spent in mitigation means cost savings, five or six percent, you know, five or six times of it in, in recovery costs. So as we look at prioritizing some of the things we need to do, we, we recommend that we look at mitigation efforts. And we know we're doing a lot of that. Five, assess our disaster insurance policy. We know our risk management folks are already looking at, you know, where we sit in the world of insurance, and should we be doing something different? So I'm sure at some point they'll be coming back in with some advisements there. But we're also, you know, thinking of our, our, you know, power, water, electric, hospitals, you know, that we're all looking at this because we can't have some of those institutions failing financially because of a disaster if insurance was the right way to go, as well as mitigation. Six, revamp community preparedness. Now, we've been working to expand that. We've already started before this. We just, we, when we got back from Helene, where we went and helped in the upstate, we came back and said, okay, big is big, right? And, and what are some of the challenges they were having? And we talked to folks who went through Hugo here and the massive tree blowdown that they experienced in the upstate. People who went through Hugo said, yeah, that's exactly what happened here. And, but once upon a time, we were a very rural community. And they said, yeah, the farmers and the locals cut paths through the trees down so they could get in and out, but the actual road wasn't clear for a very long time, months in some cases. And I said, oh, okay, let's, let's, how do we mitigate that? And, you know, so we're, we're using, we got a Duke Energy Grant here just a couple of days ago, and we're going to be using that to buy chainsaws, chaps and helmets. We, our facility, or Public Works folks have a trailer, we're going to haul it around in trailer, Wreckin' Parks is going to own it. And then our deputies will be able to check out chainsaw chaps and a helmet to throw in the trunk of the car on just a regular storm night. And when we have a big blowdown, we're able, we're going to train county staff who are physically able and want to learn how to run chainsaws properly, that we can send them out as a strike team to help open roads, so the public works can work on the big trees, who's getting all the little ones, right? How do we increase capacity? That community preparedness also falls into our CERT teams, right? Our Community Emergency Response Team training that goes on, the green shirts, fantastic program, but it's always been kind of a catch and release, back to your neighborhood, help in your own neighborhood. Well, now, we're calling upon them to expand that program so that they can serve us, you know? If we have to run a giant staging area, who can help direct traffic and do sign-in sheets at a staging area? They can. Who can help with wide area search? And not everybody needs to be tramping through the woods, but some, can you run a sign-in table? Can you keep water in the cooler? Those are, there's tasks out there that they can do. They can help us run points of distribution if we're handing out food and water. So we're really looking at, how do we expand the community? We're also working with our faith-based organizations here in, in the county. We've got some meetings coming up with them to expand that program. So, seven, our grant applications. We know that we need to continue to look at grants, but also think about, what are we spending that money on? Is it, can it help us with these recovery pieces? Can it help us to mitigation, to follow those kinds of priorities? And then last, deepen that private sector and non-governmental organizations, face faith relationships, things that they can assist with. We know some of our organizations here, companies and whatnot are, are large, and how do we engage them on, you know, immediately following a major disaster? Can you, can we rely on some of your manpower to help do things outside of your own organization? And we know that a lot of them, they want to help on game day, but, you know, a lot of times, we don't have time to forge that relationship and train people up because we're too busy. So getting ahead of that so we can be ready. So those are our, our recommendations, and I will take any questions or discussion from you. I thank you for your time today.
I, I just want to say, when you talked about a lot of these counties weren't getting a reimbursement, I want to mention the fact that you guys do a great job in documentation of expenses, and I think that's probably what's hurt some of these counties. And I've got to say, after going through the last storm or two in this area when I was on council, you guys really keep track of the expenses and the documentation, which I want to commend you guys on. And on the part on utilizing the private sector. Private sector can do it a lot cheaper than the government. And, and I don't know if a lot of people understand, but during the last snowstorm, you brought in banks construction to clear roads with, with plow, snow, they couldn't work on their job sites, but they helped us out plowing snow and stuff. And I think you guys have done a great job in connecting with our private sector. And we, like you said, we've got some big private sectors. I know coming from Lowe's Home Improvement, their, their involvement in disaster relief perks rate, and they, and we just need to continue to work with these relationships so we'll have it ready when time is right.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and sometimes our job is to lead them, to follow them, or get out of their way. And what can we do to, to get out of their way? To help them, help us, and that economic piece of, of recovery is huge. We have to get our business community back up and running. We have to get the port open, and our 78 corridor, it's part of the port. We got to get all of that back up and running to help the economic base for the entire state. And so there's, that, that, that relationship there is, is huge. And our critical infrastructure protection program has been involving a lot of these larger corporations as well, because we consider them part of our critical infrastructure, that we need them to survive, because that's where people work, and that, that's our tax base. Yeah, it's, it's a big deal.
Yep. Mr. Chairman, one of the highlights for me is the strategic partnerships that you spoke of, right? So you're working with the other, you know, folks, municipalities, leading the tri-county. And those are big things in preparedness. And also, to, to complement what you said about the bookkeeping, looking for ways to share the cost, to be fiscally responsible to the community, to the taxpayer. So applaud you for that as well, and thank you for taking the lead on that. Proud of you guys, keep it up.
Thank you very much.
All right. Mr. Byers?
Yes, sir.
Leading forward, sir.
After Helene, I spent some time in Western North Carolina and just saw the Baptists. I was with a group of Baptists, and Samaritans, Purse Guys were out there. I mean, everywhere. And, and it's great that you're working with NGOs and the faith-based groups, because I do believe if you think about Hugo hitting now versus 1989, when we've got, what, at least double the population in this region, what that would mean. So self-sufficiency and getting people to be able to take care of their place is going to be really important for us to move forward, because y'all are going to be overwhelmed, just getting arterial redways and first responders out. So any training we can do or any support we can be to train people up, not just sheriff's deputies, but just people how to use a chainsaw to get stuff off, you know, off their own house, or, or at least move things out of the way so that it's safe. I think we, I don't know liability-wise, we can do that, but certainly would be in our interest, I think. I do worry about.
Well, the difference is whether they work for us or they work with us, right? So a lot of these non, non-governmental organizations that come in and after a disaster, they're, they're on their own, but they're coordinating with us so that we're not duplicating efforts, and, and that's, you can't do it without them.
Nope.
So we're going to get real good at working with them.
Do we do any of that with the CERT training? Do we do any debris clearing training at all?
Only some light search and rescue type of stuff. We, we teach them a little bit of cribbing to help get somebody out from underneath some debris, but we don't talk about like debris removal and stuff, because we're, that's more in the immediate response. But yeah, we're, we're definitely going to be using them to assist us on other types of things.
If I may, real quick, that, I had another question for that. Do you have these apprentice programs or coming through at the school level for our high school students as far as these CERTs working in the tri-county area? Is that a push in terms of preparation? I mean, 16, 17, 18-year-old, you know, guys and gals can be, you know, working on some of those infrastructure things, safety preparation?
We do have our, the, the summer worker program.
Okay.
That we take advantage of every year, and we get a student, whether they're high school or early college, to, and they're learning about emergency management and some of those things. We usually try to base their work off of capability and interest and, and all that. But if I get ahold of you for a few seconds, you all know, I'm going to teach you something. So we, we work very hard, and, and we're definitely, any organization that wants to work with us, talk to us, we're happy to have those conversations.
Ms. Wright?
Yeah, I was wondering, is there anything in particular that you need us as a council to do like now, or are you going to come to us?
Well, I, I guess it's looking at the recommendations and, and seeing, like I said, we're doing some of that work already, and, and whether or not, you know, you all need to discuss it further or want to, you know, have a motion and give us an order to do what we're doing. But yeah, it's, I think the big thing is looking at the financial piece. And we've had meetings with, you know, the county administrator and finance and whatnot to, to have some of these early discussions about what, what if? What are we going to do? So that we're, we're, there's no shock anymore. Now it's waiting for, what is the actual threshold's going to be? What is it going to look like? Because I'm sure at some point, and we've had these same discussions with state representatives and even federal representatives, at some point in the world of emergency management, if these grants, you know, they've survived this year, but if they go away next year, there, there'll probably be a big ask in budget, and we don't want the sticker shock of like, where are you coming up with these numbers? Well, all this money went away, I need to recoup it somehow. So that's stuff that, you know, eventually you may see. I don't know, because we don't know yet what's going to happen long-term with this stuff. But there, there's, you know, contingency after contingency is being discussed right now.
I had a couple of things. The hurricane event that we had at, at the park, shout out to Channel 5 for coming out and being one of the sponsors there. When you look at the fire department, and it's not that long ago, a few of us up here remember bringing Swiftwater team in from Tennessee, I think, was the closest one we had, were able to bring in. And they came in like 2015, 2016 sometime, and that, I'm looking at the guys that would have known that. And now that the ability to not only have one, but be able to send it out in South Carolina to help there as well. Anyone that's, if, if you heard Tom talk about the new EOC and you need to coordinate that to go in there, but if you haven't seen that, versus, I'm going to look down here at Sheriff Richardson, and you look at the old EOC, or, or look over here at Mario, and think about that little tiny room upstairs in the, in that building, and, and some of the staff that was in there squeezed into a tiny room. I think I remember at one point in time, maybe a county administrator going on the roof when the roof over 911 was leaking. Just, and again, 911, the fortified building that we're in from a standpoint of EOC and 911 versus what it was, and the potential additional catastrophe that could happen had that failed at that point in time. So the ability to use, again, at that point in time, federal support to get that built, people look at those things and say, we don't want that, we don't need that, until they do. I, I, I've worked in Brunswick, Georgia for a little while, and had a young lady that worked for me, and she was from Oklahoma. Her father came over, and there was a hurricane coming in potentially into that Brunswick-Savannah area, and he was absolutely mortified by the hurricane. And all I could see was pictures of tornadoes in Oklahoma, which absolutely mortify me. And he's like, I know, well, you'd sit on the roof and watch those things. You know, we can prepare for hurricanes, folks that have moved in here from areas that don't get hurricanes, that don't understand the difference. I think I was 23 days without power. I'm, I'm looking back there at Mr. Harper, I don't think, he, he wasn't with the county at that point in time, but the inability to flush toilets because without power, pumps don't work, becomes very challenging from that standpoint. So anybody that's watching this, that's new to the area, hurricane preparedness is not a joke. We aren't trying to frighten you into being prepared when we talk about that, but we do want you to understand the importance of preparedness, because when it happens, it is too late to prepare after the fact. These guys with emergency management are constantly, and that is, if we learned one thing in Maryland, it was you prepare years in advance for that, that one event. And that's kind of what Tom's presented to us there, is the initial continued preparation for that unthinkable to happen again. So anything else before I?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, thank you. I would want to echo your sentiments. You said a lot of what I was thinking, and we'll just add to this one thing. I was extremely proud to see that Dorchester County was able to assist other jurisdictions. I mean, we, that just really shows how far we have come over the years, so thank you for that.
And, and people know, you call, we'll come. The only reason we're not coming is if we're just getting hit just as hard, but we will come, and we will bring an army with us that know what they're doing and, and are capable and competent. And that reputation is, is spreading far and wide about Dorchester County, and, and not just our capabilities, but the fact that we're willing and, and that we look at it as someday, you, you're going to have to help us and, and, you know, spread that love around. And Mr. Chinis, something you mentioned about the Swiftwater team from FEMA coming in, well, they also came in for Debbie last year. We had the FEMA team out of Tennessee again, and then the FEMA team out of Alabama relieved them. And our Swiftwater team here, the FEMA team from Alabama said, you guys have great equipment and you're so well-trained, why are we here? And, and, you know, that, that really helped boost our team's, you know, ability to, to realize they, they're good. And, and that expansion isn't just about the fire department, the sheriff's offices offered to put some deputies on team. Because you don't have to be a firefighter to be Swiftwater, you just got to be able to pass Swiftwater. So, you know, and we're going to use some of these grant monies to help outfit those deputies to, to be able to increase the size of the team. So there's a lot going on, and a lot of these past events and those hard lessons learned, as Mr. Chinis was saying, is, is, you know, we're, we're putting our money where the mouth is and, and trying to do stuff. It just takes time, but the, the capabilities continue to increase.
Mr. Ward?
Yeah, I, I wanted to kind of answer the question that Vice Chairwoman asked. When Tom was talking about the recommendations and some of the things we've considered, every time we have to have monies available to activate our plans very specifically with respect to solid waste, that's one of our major expenses. And that's one of our enterprise funds. Tom mentioned the, the $2 million basically from the microburst that we were able to expend. That was because you put a fund balance policy in place, and we had the ability to draw down on that to serve our own people. So one of the things that we are going to be asking you to consider is having a very specific percentage in the enterprise funds for disaster recovery. And then, in the past, where we've had the opportunity to spend a portion of these funds on one-time expenses, those one-time expenses may be deferred so that we'd have that percentage available for disaster recovery, whether that's stormwater, whether that's water and sewer. Again, no electricity, over 140 pump stations, critical pump stations that we have, bypass pumps and generators on, but some of the other ones in the outline area to get to that major trunk system, we don't. So those are some of the things that we'll be looking at to become more resilient. We have a great relationship with our utilities, and as a result of that, there are certain priorities that are set for restoring power to things. We've talked about hospitals, that's one in particular, but also, they assist us with water wastewater for that same purpose, so we can keep people in their homes and, and literally give them the ability to flush. But those fund balance policies is going to be one thing, I think, that we'll be looking at very carefully to bring back a recommendation to you. And beyond that, we do have the ability to still draw down funds for hazard mitigation, and that's going to be critical. So the work that we're doing with the community rating system, that is also critical. So I think we're doing the right things, but we're going to have to double our efforts in that regard.
Mr. Chairman?
We live in an area where there's a lot of citizens that have boats.
We live in an area where there's a lot of citizens that have boats. I know we got this great Swift Water team and they're doing a great job. I mean, you talked about this before, but the question that I got asked, and there's a lot of people out there, how can the regular citizens with boats come in and help with the Swift Water team? Where, kind of like how you, the cert that you have for the community, would it be like a, a lower level training for people that have boats that maybe could lend a hand or right now they're pretty much would be in the way? So?
Yeah, that, so, that is definitely, and we've seen that with the Cajun Navy and the big stuff they did in Houston and whatnot. And when you have something that, like what happened in Houston, that's that massive, there is no local resources that could help. So that's why those folks were just doing it, right? But what, the type of flooding we experience here, the river flooding, it's dangerous and it is not a place for people who are untrained at all. Our folks who are trained, even the, the teams that came in, the FEMA teams that came in were like, oh, good gracious, this is some heavy flowing water. This is dangerous and, and so, you know, we, it's not a time for amateurs. As, as well-intentioned as they are, even as seasoned boaters as they are, the, the conditions are so different than what they would normally experience on the river that it's, it's best to stay out. Where there's, there's lots of other ways to assist than with the rescue piece. That's, and a lot of those folks in Houston and elsewhere heavily damaged their own boats because you're hitting cars and stuff that are underwater and, and they were tearing the heck out of really expensive boats and then said, who's going to pay for my boat? And they said, you weren't supposed to be there. So we also don't want that to occur.
So what I hear you saying, in the future, there probably won't be a program for the local citizens to try to help.
Can you just talk about 72-hour preparedness, please?
Yeah, so we ask all of our citizens to be ready for 72 hours on their own, right? That having a, a, an emergency kit, you know, food, water, flashlight, medicines, if you have medicines, stuff for your dog, a toy for your kids, all that sort of stuff that you can be on your own and self-sufficient with a massive power outage for 72 hours. That's, that's really critical. And, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say the, the hurricane guides have come out and they will be available at all of our Dorchester County libraries by the end of the week and then some other locations as well. So if you didn't get to come see us on Saturday at the Hurricane Expo, you can go pick one of these up. And as always, it's important to know your zone. We do have some evacuation zones here in the county that are closer to the rivers. And if you go to hurricane dot S C, you'll find lots of valuable information as well as your hurricane zones.
Tom, the, and last thing I want to say, we, we all look around and we see the guys in the red trucks with the red lights, we see the guys in the white cars with the blue lights, the ambulances. We think police, ambulance, fire automatically is first responders. I'm always reminding everyone that 911 is the cornerstone or part of that first responder. You can't forget these guys over here with the triangles on their chest that are all ultimately first first responders almost when it comes to a catastrophe like that. So we appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is county administrator's time, Mr. Ward.
Mr. Chairman and Council, it is my pleasure to introduce Jeffrey Craven, the new Dorchester County Airport Manager. Mr. Craven started with us on last Tuesday and he hit the ground running, already making excellent contacts. He brings to us a wealth of knowledge as he was a member of the Air Force for a number of years, having completed the FAA Traffic Control Certification and is a distinguished graduate of the Air Force's Advanced Airfield Manager Course. He has over 13 years of service, very specifically in airfield operations. And as a result of that, he's bringing to us a wealth of knowledge and resources, including his connections to the Joint Base Charleston in North Charleston where he most recently served as a contract specialist. So we just want to say, welcome aboard and we're excited to have you and have you continue to build our team to improve the airport operations. Next item I have for your consideration is a second reading of an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances, Dorchester County, South Carolina, by deleting Chapter 20, Article 5 Hospitality Tax Section 40-106, Distribution of Funds and Substituting in lieu thereof a new Section 40-106 Distribution of Funds. Again, with the purpose of this, requiring county council to adopt an annual budget for these funds on a fiscal year basis, which would align with our current budget process. I think at the last meeting, a question was posed as why, as to why this was important, in part because it will allow us to utilize these funds for bonding capability. Right now, we have an opportunity that we're considering where this could be used as a backstop for installment purchase revenue bonds to advance some projects. So again, I'll ask for second reading.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Mr. Ward?
The last item I have for your consideration is a request for approval of road right-of-way transfers from SCDOT to Dorchester County, specifically for West Fourth North Street, S-18186 between North Main Street and North Cedar Street and S-1834, which is a secondary route across the HSB parking lot here in Somerville. And you did hear me correctly, so the front entrance is actually a secondary route in the SCDOT system and it turns back, Mr. Byers, towards Main Street, substantially in the location of the promenade where the Veterans Memorial is at the end. Apparently that was a road at one time that is still listed with SCDOT. I'll ask for your approval.
So move. There is a motion and a couple of seconds, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Oh, I'm sorry. Next item on the agenda, I, I was trying to give you something else. Next item on the agenda are committee reports, Mr. Crosby.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Earlier this evening, the PDB Committee Meeting was held. There were two items on the agenda. Both of those were passed, recommendation unanimously. If it pleases the council, I'd like to bring those, present those together. Okay. The first item was a public hearing, recommendation for second reading regarding rezoning request number 931 by Wanda Lenore to rezone 1.7 acres located at 1636 Central Avenue near Somerville, TMS number 135-16-00-002, from Office and Institutional District OI to General Commercial District CG. That was unanimous, motion carried 3-0. Then the second one was a public hearing, recommendation for second reading regarding an official map amendment, number 25-01, for Dorchester County to rezone the following parcels. Those were previously read into the minutes as well. Would you like me to read those again, Mr. Chairman, or good? Mr. Frandton, we good on that? Okay. From Agricultural Residential AR to Commercial Light Industrial District CLI, both of those were passed unanimously, 3-0.
You've heard the recommendations of the committee, all in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Next item on the agenda, and I want to say, I, I appreciate everybody's efforts here. Next item on the agenda was appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any appointments to boards and commissions?
Yeah.
Up on, we'll start with Mr. Smith.
Motion to appoint Ms. Tony Clark to Dorchester County Greedness Committee. And I have one more, can I do both of them, Tom, for the sake of time? And then motion to recommend to the governor's reappointment to Ms. Anna Libran to the Trident acre college commission.
Second. There are two motions and a second for both. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Mr. Frantle, I think I?
Yes, sir, but I've got one appointment, but also want to recognize somebody somewhat. For all of you don't realize, we had a senior citizen board member, Ms. Diane Thomas, pass away late this past week, or actually, I think it was Friday. She had been a vital member of the senior citizen board. She, everyone up here can say that she contacted us on a regular basis in support of the senior citizens and she was actually worked with my wife for 30 years at the Post and Courier and they were, they were pretty close friends. And that, that, that's going to be a loss for the seniors, senior board. She has been struggling with her health issues and I want you to keep that in mind and it not, that wasn't planned, but I also had somebody scheduled to be reappointed tonight anyway in her position because she had been in heavily medical condition. But I would like to appoint Theodore Teddy Hampton Jr. to the senior center board.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Anyone else?
Just a question, Mr. Chairman, regarding the mental health board of directors, are there any applications? None? Okay. Are we advertising?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
I wanted, and I'll comment on, on Ms. Thomas. Ms. Thomas was actually a constituent of mine and, and I have, seems like I've known her for 15 or 20 years. She lived in Briarwood and she was always active. And again, not only with the senior center, but anything, she'd pick up the phone and call and I certainly, we, we will miss her if you ever, used to vote in the, the, I, I don't even know, it's, it's Trident Tech, it's the, or the career school, their career school there when they had the voting, the poll, polling place there. Ms. Thomas was always there or in the Church of Christ right there on, on Dorchester Road when they are in Dorchester Road on Trolley Road after the press. So, yeah. So anything else? No other appointments. My next item on the agenda is county attorney's time, Mr. Frampton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This time, I would request that council hold the second of the two required public hearings regarding an ordinance 25-07, which is an ordinance approving a First Amendment to the Fee-in-Luof Tax Agreement between the county and Oak Ridge Landfill. I would request that, that second public hearing be held at this time.
I'm going to think about opening, I will open the public hearing.
I just wanted to clarify, it's for a development agreement, not F E.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Thank you. This is a, the second public hearing for the First Amendment to the Development Agreement between Dorchester County and Oak Ridge Landfill. That amendment will extend the term of the Development Agreement by 10 years from the third reading being given. So at this time, I'd request the second public hearing be held.
So I will, again, open the public hearing. I will close the public hearing.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, I would request that third reading of the ordinance approving the First Amendment to the Oak Ridge Landfill Development Agreement be given third reading.
So move. Second. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, I would request that the public hearing be held for an ordinance number 2508, which is an ordinance regarding a fee-in-luof tax agreement between Dorchester County and Razanac Graphite America, Inc., previously identified as Project Arc. I request that the public hearing be held at this time.
I will, and I'm going to just clarify, in case anyone is trying to figure out, Razanac is, is actually formerly known as Shodinka. So I will open the public hearing. I will close the public hearing.
Now, the public hearing's been held. Mr. Chairman, I would request third reading of the ordinance 25-08, authorizing pursuant to Chapter 44 of Title 12 South Carolina Code of Laws, 1976, as amended, the execution and delivery of fee-in-luof Advalorm Tax Agreement between Dorchester County, South Carolina, and Razanac Graphite America, Inc., and other matters relating thereto. I'd request third reading of the ordinance.
There is a motion, second, and a second, any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous.
Next, Mr. Chairman, with respect to the same company, that company being RW Ashley Phosphate Owner LLC, I'd request adoption of Resolution 25-07, which is an inducement resolution between the county and that company, request adoption of the inducement resolution.
So move. There is a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous.
Next, Mr. Chairman, I would request first reading of the ordinance authorizing pursuant to Title 12, Chapter 44 of Code of Laws of South Carolina, parentheses, 1976, as amended, the execution and delivery of a fee-in-luof Advalorm Tax Agreement binding between Dorchester County, South Carolina, and RW Ashley Phosphate Owner LLC as sponsor to provide for a fee-in-luof Advalorm Tax incentive and other related matters. Request first reading of the ordinance.
So move. Second.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous.
Lastly, with respect to the same project, Mr. Chairman, I would request first reading of an ordinance amending our existing multi-county park agreement with Orangeburg County to include the property of RW Ashley Phosphate Owner LLC into our multi-county park.
So move. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous.
Next, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate adoption of Resolution Number 2508, which is a resolution authorizing the extension of the fee term under the December 5, 2005 fee agreement binding between Dorchester County, South Carolina, and STTOP LLP and ZLLC. Request adoption of the resolution, which would increase the term of that fee agreement by 10 years.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? I just, the, the, I want to make the one point there, when this was originally passed, the term was shorter and all we are doing here is extending the term to what it currently is today. So, all in favor? We are unanimous.
Lastly, Mr. Chairman, I would request an executive session with county council to receive information regarding economic development prospects, to discuss a contractual matter, that being the approval of a cost-sharing agreement between Dorchester County and South Coast DFH Charleston LLC for water system improvements, and also to receive legal advice regarding a potential ordinance amendment for compensatory storage. Request those three items in executive session.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? We are in executive session. If you are going to hang out, we will be back shortly. If not, please drive safe. Mr. Ward? I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself. All in favor of going into executive session? We are unanimous. Same goes.
Same goes.
I've stayed if you're leaving.
Mr. Frampton? Can you bring us out of an executive session?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, executive session council discussed the previously announced items, but no action was taken.
Are there any motions?
Yes, I move the county council authorized the county administrator to execute the amendment and restated cause shared agreement between South Coast DFH Charleston LLC and DeChesney County.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Discussion is that motion was too easy. There are not enough TMS numbers in there, so... Maybe next time, Mr. Smith.
I second that. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Are there any additional motions? Mr. Byers?
I would like to make a motion that we adjourn.
There is a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank y'all.
It's not that I'm not willing to stay here.